Good evening. My name is Linda Whitmore and I'm a member of the West Contra Costa County League of Women Voters. And I'm also the chair of tonight's forum. I want to welcome the audience and welcome our candidates, the city council candidates to tonight's forum. I'm excited that we have all seven of the residents who are seeking our votes here tonight. Tonight's forum is on a webinar platform, which means that the attendees cannot be seen and they will be muted. We also will not have a chat or question or answer feature. All of the questions asked tonight have been submitted by our League of Women Voters. We have three sponsors for tonight's event. Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Inc., Epsilon Phi Zeta Chapter, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People in AACP, and the League of Women Voters of West Contra Costa County. And with that, I am going to turn the Zoom over, our webinar, excuse me, over to our moderator, Jeffrey Wright.
Well, good evening to our viewers. It is certainly my pleasure, privilege, and opportunity to serve as your moderator for this forum this evening. We're going to have a forum this evening that's a little different. There are prepared questions for our city council candidates. And later in the program, we will have a roundtable, an open debate type forum, with an opportunity for rebuttal by our council candidates. So that ought to offer us an opportunity to have a more in-depth view of the candidates and it should be a bit more spirited. As for me, I'm a native son of Richmond. My family, grandparents, parents came here in the 1940s to take advantage of the wartime industry. So like many of you, have a long history here in Richmond. And I'm concerned about the issues, the challenges and opportunities that the community faces. So I too am eager to hear what the candidates will have to say. The candidates are from three distinct districts. District Two, District Three, and District Four. Now, for the benefit of those of you who might not be familiar with the districts, I'll give you a broad geographic spectrum, so it's a little clearer for you what the areas are that they're representing. Representing. District Two goes out as far as the giant highway picks up portions of Parkchester Village, Point Richmond, and back around towards Brickyard Cove. District Three picks up South Richmond and the Iron Triangle. Again, I'm speaking in broad parameters, just so you'll have an idea. District Four picks up the Richmond Hills, what would be the Richmond Elsabroni Valley, and portions of Hilltop. Our District Two candidates are Caesar Zapata and Andrew Butt. Our District Three candidates are Corky Bouzay, Oscar Garcia, and Doria Robinson. And our District Four candidates are Sohaila Bana and Jamin Purcell. So I'm going to start with District Two. And I am going to give the District Two candidates an opportunity to present their three-minute opening statement. And before they start, I just want to, again, remind our candidates that we want to have an orderly forum this evening. So let's be respectful, let's stay focused on the issues, not on personalities, not on individuals, and not on groups. But let's stay focused on the issues, the challenges and opportunities that the city of Richmond has to face and deal with. So let's keep it nice and orderly, and let's keep our language appropriate. We don't need any colorful language tonight. So with that, I am going to ask that the spotlight be put on Andrew Butt for his three-minute opening statement. Mr. Butt? You need to unmute, Mr. Butt.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Jeffrey. First of all, I'd just like to acknowledge Mr. Wright for moderating this event and for Linda Whitmore for hosting it into the League of Women Voters. Very much appreciated, and thank you for the opportunity. So without further ado, my name is Andrew Butt. I'm running for District Two City Council. And I'm born and raised in District Two. I reside in District Two currently in Point Richmond, the area of District Two. It's happens to be where the city started in the oldest neighborhood in Richmond. And I'm raising my two kids here. I went to public schools in the area in District Two. And my kids also attended public schools in District Two. I have been around Richmond a long time. I was a planning commissioner for eight years in Richmond. I was a planning commissioner for four years in El Cerrito. I was on the design review board for three years. And I've served a number of nonprofit capacities currently, the president of two nonprofits, one for early childhood mental health and another for Point Richmond Music. So I have a 10-point plan to improve Richmond. I'll just go through it real quick. My first is safety and blind. I think this is the most important thing. I want Richmond to feel safe and look nice. This is probably the number one priority for me and most of the people who I know who live in Richmond. Secondly is revenue and responsible development. These two things go hand in hand. It cannot happen unless one is achieved. We need to entice good developers and businesses to want to come to Richmond and implement the general plan with good and responsible projects and good and responsible businesses. The environment. I believe clean air, water, and preservation of access to open spaces paramount. I will carefully and thoughtfully navigate the sometimes conflicting viewpoints of business, industry, and development and the environment. I don't feel that these values and rights should ever be compromised. But I also don't think the approach taken by groups claiming to be environmentalists have been well-informed or honestly articulated, specifically in regard to Point Malati and Zenica projects. Recreation. I want there to be an abundance of recreation activities in Richmond. And I want to see those that are already here enhanced and invested in. This means parks, trails, aquatic facilities, community centers, sports leagues, interpretive hikes, boating, paddling, sailing, youth activity groups like scouting. Our kids and adults need to have an abundance of healthy recreational options. And we need to ensure that the city is doing everything it can to deliver and support this. Mental health. As president of the board of the oldest nonprofit in West Contra Costa County, dedicated exclusively to early childhood mental health, I know firsthand the extent and the need to address the most meaningful and impactful way possible. This means working with the county and other partners to come up with a comprehensive plan that doesn't allow folks to slip to the cracks. This is an issue that strikes all ages and demographics and requires an all-hands-on-deck approach to tackle. The need is incredibly great, and the current resources are extremely limited and strained. Homelessness. This is a crucial item. I've talked to a lot of people about this, including recently Mark DeSagne, folks at the county. It's a critical issue. Development of our downtown, our waterfront, transparency in local government, and education and improving schools and libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butt. We will now hear from Mr. Zapata. You have three minutes for your opening statement. The timer should be on the screen. Let's put the spotlight on Mr. Zapata.
Don't see the timer yet. But maybe I'll start. There we go. All right. Thank you, League of Women Voters. Thank you for all the volunteers. I'm a little sad that you didn't ask me to do your flyer for this event, as I usually do here at events. So thank you, though. Thank you for putting this together. My name is Caesar Zapata, and I am looking to represent District Two. District Two is one of the most diverse districts in Richmond, with two of the wealthiest areas and two of the poorest areas. And then with the majority of the big businesses, including Chevron, Amazon, Sims Metals, amongst others. As Jeff was saying, we incorporate Hilltop, Parkchester, North Richmond, Shield Reed, Santa Fe, Point Richmond, and a sliver of the Marina Bay. I grew up here. I went to Helms Middle School, Richmond High School, Contra Costa Community College, shortly after my family migrated here to the U.S. from Mexico. I grew up here most of my life. As a council member, I will work alongside with all the city council, regardless if I agree with them on all the issues or not. We need a city council that can work together. To the detriment of the community is if we do not work together. I will also work alongside with other cities and agencies to help uplift Richmond. The only way that we're going to get funding, the only way that we can move projects along is to work with other agencies. Some of my priorities include public safety. Richmond Police work collaboratively with our residents to address neighborhoods' issues and improve safety. I support ceasefire and other community-based efforts to reduce violence in our neighborhoods. However, we must do more to institute preventive measures to tackle crime along long-term and ensure future reduction in violence. This includes enrichment and recreation programs for our youth. Housing and homelessness. Richmond is one of the few cities along the East Bay that is not built out. We have a great opportunity to build affordable workforce housing. I myself became homeless after coming out as an LGBTQI youth. We know that over 40% of LGBTQI youth end up homelessness. To solve homelessness is not a one solution fits all. Working on their infrastructure. Richmond's infrastructure is crumbling from the Richmond wastewater plant to our sidewalks and roads and lights. We deserve better. We have had many tax measures to help fix our infrastructure. Let's put that money where it was promised it would go. Economic engines, economic jobs in economy. A hospital. Now, I know I'm running out of time here, but we need a hospital. We just went through a pandemic, and we only have one hospital in West County. And that does not serve all of Richmond. If something was to happen, we would be in serious danger. We need to restart that economic engine. I will advocate for local hire policies and economic development projects to bring better-paying jobs to Richmond residents. Thank you so much. I hope to be able to earn your vote this November.
Thank you, Mr. Zapata. I'm going to ask that both candidates be put on the screen now, because we're going to move into the Q and A portion of our program. And again, a reminder that you will each have one minute to respond to the question. The timer will be on the screen, so you can monitor your response time. So I'm going to start with you, Mr. Butt, on this question, and I'll follow up with you, Mr. Zapata. What experience qualifies you to serve on the Richmond City Council? And what differentiates you from the other candidates?
Thank you, Mr. Wright. So my experience is fairly extensive. As mentioned, I served eight years. That was four consecutive two-year terms on the planning commission, where at the completion of that, I was, I served as vice chair for a couple of years. I actually chaired the El Cerrito Planning Commission, which I served on for four years while I lived there briefly when I bought my first home. I served on the design review board. These were all appointed positions. They were, you know, pretty high-level City of Richmond positions. We made, we were on the planning commission, as some of you may be aware, it's a quasi-judicial body. So a lot of decisions we made really had very impactful impacts on the community. For example, the Chevron modernization project. And I also, as mentioned, I have served on a number of nonprofits, probably a dozen or so, maybe more. Going back, you know, to, currently I serve on the Richmond Museum of History. I'm president of the board and a founding member of the Point Richmond Music. I'm, I actually am in the process of resigning because I'm focusing on my candidacy, and there could be some conflicts. Should I get elected? But recently president of the board for the past two years of early childhood.
You're in town, Mr. Butt.
Thank you. Sorry.
It's okay. Mr. Zapata, the same question for you. What experience qualifies you to serve on the Richmond City Council? And what differentiates you from the other candidates?
Thank you, Mr. Wright. So I am already an elected official. I am an elected official currently, president of the West County Wastewater District. I know how to create policy. I know how to work with other directors, even when our opinions are different, even when our points of views are different, even when we come from different steps of life and we have different perspectives. That is going to be one of my strengths. That's going to be the greatest strength, is to be able to work alongside other people who I do not always agree with. In previous years, I was the founder and president of the Hilltop District Never Could Cancel. I have been my HOA president since I purchased my home almost 20 years ago here at Hilltop. I was appointed to the Contra Costa Economic Development Council. I'm a board member for GRIP. I'm a board member of the Contra Costa College Foundation, president and founder of the first and only known LGBTQI organization in the city of Richmond. I'm the chair for the Sierra Club. I've been on many other boards that I can't name them all, because I'm running out of time. But I've been in the community. I've been helping. Even when you don't see me, know that I have been there helping out. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Zapata, while you're still up, I'm going to start you off on question number two. If elected, what are three goals you would like to complete by the end of your term? And how would you accomplish them?
Thank you. So when elected, one of the goals I want to make sure that I do is work on the homeless issue. Work on affordable housing. Making sure, one of the problems that I've heard the most from people trying to come in to drive our economic engine is that we are short-staffed. We're not returning people's phone calls. Therefore, we are losing business, and we're losing revenue to the city of Richmond. We're not going to be able to build. We're not going to be able to have money to have services in the city of Richmond. So I want to be able to restart our economic engine. I want to make sure that we're fully staffed. I want to make sure that housing is a priority and that we are building out affordable housing for everyone, middle-class housing, and all types of housing. I want to make sure that our public safety, very important, that we're fully staffed, that we're providing public safety for all. That includes lights, that includes sidewalks, that includes clean, safe streets, et cetera. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Zapata, same question for you, Mr. Butt. If elected, what are three goals you would like to complete by the end of your term? And how would you accomplish them?
Thank you. So my first goal really is to focus on improving the image of Richmond. That means the safety and the cleanliness. So I'm talking about light, I'm talking about public safety, I'm talking about police. So I would look to refund the police, at least to get their numbers up to a point. They've got 177 authorized positions. As mentioned, they have 96 currently. We need to get that back up to full staffing. I would work with the city manager, with the chief of police, and look at how to get that done. Secondly, I would focus on development, specifically development of the downtown. I was on the Richmond Main Street Board for a long time. As mentioned, I was a planning commissioner and I'm an architect. That's my area of expertise. And so I would bring in good developers with good projects and get revenue-generating projects in the downtown. Thirdly, I would reassess Measure U. There was a big faux pas where they did zero outreach to businesses. That's a big problem. I think we need to go back to businesses, have that conversation, figure out a way to make it fair to all.
Thank you, Mr. Butt. And while you're still on the screen, I'm going to start off question number three with you. What are the biggest fiscal challenges in Richmond? Name two things you would do to make improvement.
So one problem is, is we don't have development happening here. And, you know, we've got a couple of big projects that have been stalled out in some cases. While they're kind of at the finish line of their approval process, Point Malati is certainly one of them. Zenica has also stalled out. Those are two good projects that I think, you know, could be revenue generating, could be a real win-win for the whole community. And so I would look to get those back going and get them back on track and ensure that, you know, that they're developed in a way that's positive for the people of Richmond. Hilltop is another one. And then secondly, you know, I would, again, look at reassessing Measure U. You know, it was poorly written, it was poorly rolled out. I think while it has generated some revenue, it more than anything else makes businesses want to leave the city and does not entice its businesses to come to the city. So I think if we take a better look at that, we can both get businesses to stay, to grow, and to bring new businesses.
Thank you. Mrs. Zapata, same question for you. What are the biggest fiscal challenges in Richmond? Name two things you would do to make improvement.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. So one, the biggest thing that we can do right now is focusing on the Hilltop project. That is going to be the largest project in West County has ever seen. That is going to be able to help uplift not just our community, but our neighboring communities as well. That's going to give us the revenue. That's going to give us housing. That's going to give us opportunities. That's going to help people that live here feel like they have a place that they can shop at, a place where they can raise their kids, a place where they can continue living in Richmond. This is something that we need. This is going to uplift all of Richmond, not just Hilltop. We'll be able to prioritize money everywhere else. Working to make sure that our taxes are equitable. Whether it be Measure U, whether it be any future tax, are we being equitable across the board? Are we making sure that the big businesses are paying their fair share? And smaller, medium businesses are paying equitably? We don't want to drive out business. We want to keep Richmond flowing with good businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zapata. And I'm going to follow up with a question for you, Mr. Zapata. How will you rally the different groups in the community to get beyond the divisions of politics after the election is over? So we can be unified and moving forward for the benefit of everyone in Richmond?
Thank you, Mr. Wright. So we have the great privilege of having a neighborhood council in every corner of District Two. What I would do is bring in all the neighborhood councils and stakeholders all around Richmond and in our district to make sure that we can work together. Now, you might have noticed there that I said around Richmond. I will be elected to District Two, but I will, I will be representing all of Richmond. So it is important that while we are looking at the issues in District Two, that people outside of District Two can also opine, because that is the only way that we're going to be able to move forward together, bringing them to the table. I want to be able to bring people from the left, from the right, from the middle, from north, from south, being able to listen to them. They're not going to have to agree. But to be able to create good policy is to be able to bring people to the table, listening to everyone. Again, not necessarily agreeing, but listening and making sure that we get all sides. Thank you.
Same question for you, Mr. Butt. How will you rally the different groups in the community to get beyond the divisions of politics after the election is over? So that we can be unified, moving together for the benefit of everyone in Richmond, Mr. Butt?
So I think I would harness the reality that I do believe exists, which is that we all really are passionate about Richmond. And that in the end, you know, we all have common goals of wanting this to be a place that's healthy, that's successful, that's nurturing, you know, for everybody, right? And so I think, I think we focus on those goals. You know, maybe, maybe we do some out-of-the-box things. I think, I think one thing that I've seen be very successful is things like the music event, the concert that we throw here in Point Richmond, is bring it, bring, bring everyone to the, to the, to the table, make it something fun, you know? And then, and then, you know, we can talk about these issues of which we're all passionate. But again, I think in the end, you know, we all want the same thing. We want a successful city. We want people to thrive. We want the people who live and work here to thrive. I honestly believe, and I think if we focus on that and not the negativity, we can get together and we can accomplish some seriously positive things here in Richmond.
Thank you, Mr. Butt. I want to thank you, gentlemen, running for city council, District Two. So that concludes the question and answer portion for the District Two candidates. But stay tuned, they will be participating later on in our roundtable debate forum. So I'm now going to call up our District Three candidates. And we're going to put the spotlight on Mr. Corky Bouzay, who will start with his opening statement. Mr. Bouzay, you have three minutes. The timer should be on the screen. You need to unmute, Mr. Bouzay. Unmute.
I should know better. Okay, I want to start off with this statement. For the very first time, District Alexis will give this community the opportunity to receive the benefits that other neighborhoods have enjoyed the luxury of. I have a reputation for standing up for the South Side. District Three is the South Side, and that's what I'm known for. Right behind me, you'll see Casper's Hot Dogs. That's where everybody comes and meets with me. We discuss the issues of the city of Richmond. Richmond, the South Side has not been treated fairly. The, most of the homeless stuff is in the South Side. And I want to make sure that we make it even for everybody. I'm known to be outspoken. I'm known to get things done. So with that, the reason I got back in the race is because the citizens of the South Side said, Corky, we need you. I worked on the Tent City thing down in the Iron Triangle to stop the violence, if you all remember that. I worked with Hacienda. Let me show this to you. And this is a, a statement from the people at the Hacienda. I, single-handedly, got the Hacienda rebuilt. But unfortunately, the African-American people that were displaced out of there doesn't look like they're going back in. I saw to it that they had vouchers. On the South Side of town, Kennedy High School is slated to be rebuilt. I want to make sure that the South Side has a seat at the table, because that's where their kids are going to go to school. So these are the kinds of things. And let me, let me go back to my start, my beginning statement. Experience, experience, experience. I ran businesses on the South Side. I've been there all my life. And I'll tell you, I went to China in representing the city of Richmond, brought back a project that's called Terminal Number One. Because I brought it back, it's been sitting for over 10 years now with a $1 million price tag on it. We're going to get that done. We are going to live in District Three like everybody else in the city of Richmond has lived. And we don't want to emulate that. We want to build our own. So therefore, your kids have something proud, to be proud of. My question is, on the South Side of town, what do you have that represents your own? We don't have the parks. We don't have the stores. Those things I plan on doing. Is it ironic that I saw when I was on that council from 2010 to 2014, when I stood up for the Chevron Project Renewal? Guess what? Those were jobs for Richmond people. And I was the one to call for the vote, which costed me my council seat. But it's okay, because you know, everything goes around, comes around. And one thing about Corky, you either love him to death or you hate him. You have to put it the way it goes. But on that city council, I think with a new group of people, we'll have a great community.
Thank you, Mr. Bouzay. We will now hear from Oscar Garcia, his three-minute opening statement. Mr. Garcia?
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. My name is Oscar Garcia, and I'm running for District Three. I'm looking to represent the district that I have roots in since the 1950s. My parents and extended family live here. And I am the son of first generation of Mexican immigrants. My dad has an eighth-grade education. My mom has a third-grade education. And I grew up in Richmond in the 80s and 90s. So stats for people like me are not very good. But I worked very hard to graduate balagotarian, balagotarian from Kennedy, and eventually UC Berkeley. And I am now an environmental engineer at one of the top biofuel firms in the, in the world. My priority now is to create a better Richmond for my young nieces and nephews living here and all Richmond residents in general. And I hope to be one of the first Richmond-born Latinos on the city council. My experience includes being on the Community Police Review Commission and as president of the Iron Triangle Neighborhood Council. And I've seen firsthand that Richmond is at a crossroad. We have a lot of issues, and electing me will help move the city in the right direction. My vision for Richmond is to use state climate funding and to create a renewable energy hub here in Richmond. My plan is also to invest in our community, to clean up our streets, to prioritize public safety, and to address homelessness in a humane manner. I'm the only candidate that has been closely following the issues here in the city and that has a realistic plan. Carefully listen tonight to all of the candidates and see who truly knows the issues that matter most to you and who actually is willing to address them. So please remember to vote for Oscar G. for District Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. We will now hear from Ms. Doria Robinson. You will have three minutes for your opening statement. Ms. Robinson?
Hi, good evening. My name is Doria Robinson. I'm also a third-generation Richmond resident, running for a city council here in District Three, where I grew up, where I raised my kids, and where I currently live. I have over 16 years of strong community, small business, city, and county staff relationships that I will use to be a city councilwoman who can work together to get positive things done for District Three and for Richmond. As the executive director of Urban Health, I have experienced developing and managing multimillion-dollar budgets, creating jobs for local residents, programs that support youth, providing healthy food for over 500 families each week, and attracting millions of dollars of new investment in Richmond. What I've heard from so many candidates is that Richmond is heading in the wrong direction. I would like to say I respectfully disagree. Growing up here during the 1970s and 1980s, I have seen the changes in Richmond over the last 40 years. City staff, local community organizations, local residents have all worked together over the past 20 years to make substantial improvements to our parks, infrastructure, youth services, streetscape... have all worked together over the past twenty years to make substantial improvements to our parks, infrastructure, youth services, street scape. We have expanded our youth works. We have created the Richmond Promise Scholarship Program for Richmond youth. We have rebuilt our schools. When I talk to people who grew up in Richmond but moved, moved away and moved away and returned today to visit their friends and family, they always are impressed by the improvements they see. That said, there is still a lot of work to do. We are still using our young, losing our young people to gun violence. There are ever-increasing numbers of people forced to live in their cars and on the streets due to increased cost of housing. And the cost of living continues to rise, and it's difficult to secure jobs that are at a Bay Area living wage. I will work to establish transitional housing with wraparound services for our unhoused residents. I will support and empower city staff with the expertise and our local community organizations like CHDC and Richmond Land to create more low-income housing for Richmond residents. I will work with the county business development manager and her team to make sure that Richmond is included in her citywide plan for just transition development. That will include well-fought-out initiatives to attract clean tech, ag tech, biomedical, and advanced manufacturing facilities to Contra Costa. But I will also make sure that this plan incorporates protections for resident health. I will also push to make sure that this plan includes community-based just transition economic initiatives that create green jobs for local residents and improve quality of life. I strongly believe that we must lean into programs that prevent crime and support mental health and provide positive enrichment activities for Richmond youth. I believe that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Thank you for this time, and I hope I am able to earn your vote in November.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. We will now go to our question and answer portion of the program for our District Three candidates. So let's have them all on the screen. Great. First question, I am going to start with Mr. Garcia. And that question, Mr. Garcia, is what experience qualifies you to serve on the Richmond City Council? And what differentiates you from the other candidates?
So as mentioned in my intro, I'm the candidate, the only candidate that's been closely following what's going on in the city. I know the stats. I've been hearing from staff, from many community members over the last year. And I've actually been the only one who's been calling into city council meetings to address issues such as public safety that are a top priority for the district. I'm the only candidate that has been doing that in, over the last couple of years. And I've also served on the Community Police Review Commission and know firsthand the, the extreme issues that our Richmond Police Department is having with staffing. In addition, with my experience with the President of the Iron Triangle, I have worked with all of the neighborhood councils in District Three, and I'm very aware of the issues that are important to them. So my experience is knowing exactly what's going on. I won't have to be trained, and I'm ready to work on the solutions from day one.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. I'll pose that same question to you, Ms. Robinson. What experience qualifies you to serve on the Richmond City Council and what differentiates you from the other candidates?
Yeah, so I've actually spent the last twenty years working in Richmond to improve Richmond. I've been creating programs that actually feed people, that actually employ people, not talk about employing people, but actually employ people. I've created training programs that people can actually have a career and not just a job. I've actually improved our streets. I actually created an anti-dumping program on the Richmond Greenway that now we have regular monthly dump, free dumpster days. I don't, I haven't just talked about improving. I've actually done the improvements over the last twenty years. I have the experience of actually running a large organization. I know what it means to balance a budget, and I know what it means when you have to lay off people or when you think you have to lay off people because you haven't balanced your budget correctly. I know that pain. I know what it means to have the responsibility of people's households on your shoulders and making sure that we're doing things properly and managing, managing our household correctly, managing our city. I can bring that experience to Richmond to make a positive change.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. Bouzay, I pose that same question to you. What experience qualifies you to serve on the Richmond City Council and what differentiates you from the other candidates?
Well, I'm the only person here with experience. Let me go down the line. I was a former city councilperson. I was a vice mayor. I was a representative for the city of Richmond on international setting in China and Japan. I worked on the Tent City. I was with Lily Mae Jones when they put the first foot on the Greenway that Mrs. Robinson is just talking about. I have, I have put together the African-American community to come to the Richmond City Council. They used to call it Corky's Army. But you know what? It's representative of your community. I've been on Parks and Recreation. If you go into a restroom in any one of our parks in, in any part of the city, Corky Bouzay put those in when he was on Parks and Recreation. I have been on the, the police review board to hire Police Chief Chris Magnus. I'm the one that brought him here. If you look on the back of a police car and you see the statement on the back, the community, guess what? I wrote that for him. I put it there.
Thank you for your response, Mr. Bouzay. Going to move on to a question pertaining to homelessness. And this question, I'm going to start with you, Ms. Robinson. What is your opinion on the city's approach to address the homeless crisis? Is there anything you would do differently?
I mean, I, I think our current approach is, is not an approach at all. We're not actually addressing it. We're moving it around the city. We, when we get, you know, when there's enough complaints, we move people from one location to another so that the people who are complaining in the last location no longer complain. We don't actually help people out of homelessness. And I think that is the key problem. We need to change our policy so that we actually put in place a plan to transition people out of homelessness. That means establishing more emergency housing. That means establishing transitional housing with wraparound services to address drug addiction, to address mental illness, to actually step people back into, back into society, back into jobs, working with them like a coach to get their lives back on track and really working with them where they are. If someone is in a mental health crisis or has mental health issues, they may not be able to hold jobs and be in that position. We need to understand where they are and help them from where they are. We also need to establish more low-income housing so that people can sustain themselves on the, with the kind of jobs that are available long-term.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. Bouzay?
Sir?
I'll pose that same question to you.
You know, homeless, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'll read the question so you'll be sure you get it all. What is your opinion on the city's approach to address the homeless crisis? Is there anything you would do differently?
Well, I think that what we need to do is we need to start putting the money in the Jeffrey Wright place. Because if you don't put the money in the right place, you don't get any action. Berkeley's been closed down. Excuse me, Oakland's been closed down, San Francisco. So basically, homeless people are migrating where they can go. And I think that we have to be able to understand what the problem is to be able to deal with it. I think that we need a better representation from the county. I think Supervisor Joya is holding his land back and holding the money back that he's getting. For instance, at the Marriott up at Hilltop. We lost a ton of money for that, but we could have put homeless people there for good. They, they had them there for a short period of time. They left. Hacienda, which I just told you that I worked with them rebuilding, that's getting ready to come available for housing for some homeless people once they qualify. So once again, we've got to make all the stakeholders play their part in making sure that we address homelessness.
Thank you, Mr. Bouzay. Mr. Garcia, what is your opinion of the city's approach to address the homeless crisis? Is there anything you would do differently?
Yeah, I, I think what we've seen over the last couple of months and years, actually, is that the city is not an expert in addressing homelessness. And we need to bring in those experts mainly at the county and state level. The county has a lot of money under Measure X to be able to address and provide the housing or that sort of deposit for an apartment. And so does the state currently as it tries to address the statewide homelessness issue. But more, more importantly, it's a regional issue. It's my understanding, based on communications with representatives from other cities throughout the region, Richmond doesn't even attend or participate in a lot of these regional conversations. And I definitely intend to change that. And I have also seen firsthand the over a hundred individuals that are living in Castro, the Castro Street encampment, and it's, it's a tragedy, and we definitely need to bring in the experts.
Thank you. Appreciate that response. Mr. Bouzay? I'm going to start this question off with you. What do you propose is the best way to address side shows and why?
Well, that's good. Side shows are here because we don't have the police to address the situation. I'm a very familiar with side shows because I used to be a professional drag racer. So I know what's going on, but we cannot let that happen in our city. People are getting hurt. Property is getting hurt, and the thing that we have to do is we have to get on social media because basically, it's not a real brain washer. You just get on social media, they get on there and tell you where their side shows are going to be. So we might want us to be able to stop them from coming into the city of Richmond and doing it. Our council has accepted that. Our council said they, they accept side shows. I don't accept them under any circumstances. Take it to the track. Do it there where it's safe. But when you have young kids hanging out the window of a car and they get thrown out under another car and killed, then we have a parent sitting there crying and a bad reputation for the city of Richmond.
Same question for you, Ms. Robinson. What do you propose is the best way to address side shows and why?
Yeah, I mean, I think that every generation, there are, there are some activity that young people do that, that is dangerous, that causes problems, that, that people don't really want to happen. And what I don't want to do is criminalize further our youth. I don't think that that's the answer. I think there's other ways to dissuade people from doing side shows in the places that they are. I hear a lot of talk about creating places where people could, like, like Corky said, go to the track and do it in a place that's safe under certain rules. I think that that's something that we could explore, but I also think we need more activities for young people to do. There's nothing to do in Richmond, you know? There's nothing to do at night. I think that we could actually invest in creating an entertainment district that has nighttime activities where people can come and, and hang out and get to know each other and have a social life, not just kids, but young adults, people with young kids. You go to Temescal, you go to different areas, and you see people, you know, living their full lives. And we need to actually offer those things here in Richmond as well.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Same question for you, Mr. Garcia. What do you propose is the best way to address side shows and why?
So as being part of the Community Police Review Commission, I've learned that a lot of the youngsters that are doing the side shows are not even from the Bay, from Richmond. And in many cases, not even from the Bay Area. And what happens is they drive around in the Bay Area trying to find that one city where there isn't any enforcement. Guess what? That city happens to be more and more here in Richmond. And that's why we, we have a lot of these youngsters coming in from as far as the Central Valley, doing the side shows here and because we aren't able to usher them on, you know, to continue on moving on to other, other cities. It's similar to the homelessness issue is we don't have a plan to help these people move on or not come here in the first place. And I also find it troubling that there's proposals of doing a safe side show. There's no such thing. I've also been to side shows. There's no such thing. And that's a huge liability, and I don't think we should do that here in the city of Richmond.
All right, thank you for your response. In fairness, I'm going to ask you all this fourth question too. We're getting kind of tight on time in this portion of the program, but I'll make it up on the roundtable end of the program. So I'm going to ask each of you this last question. How will you rally the different groups in the community to get beyond the divisions of politics after the election is over? So we can all be unified for the benefit and betterment of the city of Richmond? And I'll start with you on that one, Mr. Garcia.
So I have the benefit of already having working relationships with various stakeholders throughout the city. I don't come with the baggage of just having a certain given set of friends or people that I've known to only hang out with. I hang out with people with all sectors of the city, and I have contacts that can help build more bridges as needed. And one of my biggest benefit or what I bring to the table is I, I'm a true listener. I, as, as over the years, have developed, like I said, relationships with folks at all levels within the city. And that has helped me have really informed, a really informed outlook on the city. Like as today, I'm showing that today. I have a lot of this data and information because I listen more than I talk. And I intend to bring that to the table, to bring everyone together, to listen to the issues that matter to people on all sides of the table and really start addressing them once and for all.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Ms. Robinson, the same question for you. How will you rally the different groups in the community to get beyond the divisions of politics after the election is over? So we can be united in moving forward for the benefit of all of Richmond. Ms. Robinson?
I think one of the most powerful things that can bring people together is to focus on collectively solving the problems that we face. Have making sure that we create, create opportunities for everyone to have a role in the solution. Inviting everybody to the table. When I, if I was going to address public safety, I would bring together all the preventative folks, the folks who are working on preventative measures, as well as talk to the police and have them at the table too. It's a collective answer. It's an answer that answers the problem that we're working on. And if everyone has a role in the solution, then everyone feels like their voice is, is uplifted and that they have a role to play in positive things. I think that is one of the most powerful things to bring people together as a community is to build something together. When we collectively built Unity Park, we brought together seventeen different organizations, fifty-eight different people to design and build a park. We, we did not all get along. We did not all understand each other clearly. But by the end, we had a beautiful park, and now we're stronger for it.
Thank you for your response. Mr. Bouzay, same question for you. How will you rally the different groups in the community to get beyond the division of politics after the election is over? So we can be united in moving forward for the benefit of all of Richmond. Mr. Bouzay, you have one minute.
Thank you. In reference to the Iron Triangle homicides and the Tent City, we were able to bring the people together to reduce that. That would be the same thing I'm doing as a councilperson. I've done it before, and I'll do it again. I do want to publicly say it's been a pleasure to work with the two candidates who are working against me because we can sit down and, and be able to have a legitimate conversation without anything getting out of hand. How, how would I do that? Again, as Doria said, bring everybody to the table. Sit down, work it out, find out what's your problem. But first thing I got to do, I've got to take care of District Three. That South Side has been underrepresented. And when you see the South Side come up, guess what? Other people will want to join. And we get parks and restaurants and things. You know, I go back to the days of Lily Mae Jones. I can't change that. You know, the lady brought people together, and I was right at her side. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank our District Three candidates for participating in this portion of the program, the question and answer, that have an opportunity to speak forward during our roundtable session. But now, we are going to bring forth our District Four candidates, Sohaila Bana and Jamin Purcell. And we are going to start with Ms. Bana and give her three minutes to come forward with her opening statement. So let's get Ms. Bana on the screen for her three-minute opening statement. Ms. Bana, you have the floor.
Thank you to legal women voters and others. Yeah, my name is Sohaila Bana. I've lived in Richmond for twenty-five years with my husband and raised two children who live on their own now. I have a PhD in electrical engineering and computer sciences from Cal. I have worked as an engineer for thirty years in academia, industry, startups, established companies in Silicon Valley. And I have served you for two decades at the State of California, working for Safer Highways at Caltrans. I've been representing you at the county and city levels, including Rex and Parks Commission, Community Advisory Fire Commission, County Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and more. But I felt I had to take one step further to address the needs of my community. So I started organizing the community to find its voice and be heard by the elected officials and authorities. I care for public safety, and I show it through actions. When a shooting happened at Valley View Shopping Strip, I organized the community and brought them together. When a shooting happened at Valley View Shopping Strip, I organized a community and brought them together with the police and business owners to enhance safety measures. For wildfire safety, I established a nonprofit organization, organization that delivers. It is West Contra Costa Fire Safe Council, of which I am the president. It brings residents, our fire departments, as well as the, our fire department, as well as the county and penal fire departments together to work on wildfire mitigation. As the president, I have been successful in working with many different agencies and bringing Measure X resources to our community. For example, to clear evacuation routes for Carriage Hills and Castro Heights communities, to provide public emergency access routes to Hilltop Greens, as well as El Sobrante and Penal Residence, work in progress. And I continue to help my community be heard. East Bay Mud is building a not-so-attractive building. I've organized a public forum to let them hear residents' concerns. West Contra Costa Unified School District is not doing a great job. I'm inviting the superintendent to hear parents' issues and concerns. My leadership and effective teamwork is the result of decades of experience, both as an engineer and as an advocate. I envision Richmond with many new blue and green jobs for our residents, especially opportunities for young people to make living wages. With more market rate housing, affordable housing and transitional housing, with more businesses, thriving, sustainable businesses that bring more revenue to the city and enable us to have clean and safest streets and parks. We need to work on crime preventive measures, reducing gun violence, increasing access to quality health and climate resiliency. I'm grateful for your trust so far and will be honored to be your representative. Your vote is key to ensure you have your true representation at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bana. We will now hear from Jamin Purcell. He will have three minutes for his opening statement. Mr. Purcell.
All right. My name is Jamin Purcell and I'm a small business owner, human rights activist and environmental justice organizer. I've lived in Richmond District Four for over a decade with my husband Kelly and our two dogs, Lock and Torvald. I wanna share why I'm running for city council. So I was born in Alaska where winters are cold, dark and cruel. And one thing everyone knew was that you had to trust and work with your neighbor because you never knew when you'd be snowed in, hit a moose, or if the generator might go out. So you didn't have to be friends with everyone, but you had to know you could rely on them, just as they knew they could rely on you. And that shared understanding shaped my political view. I wanna bring that value. That community has to be there for each other to our local office. So after leaving Alaska, I steeped myself in public policy. After achieving two degrees in political science and philosophy, I went on to earn a master's from McGeorge School of Law. In Richmond, I have dedicated my time to community development. I'm a proud, I am proud of my work with the Richmond Shoreline Alliance, as well as my advocacy work in Sacramento on Bill AB seventeen thirty-two. I've served on the May Valley Neighborhood Council's treasurer for three years. And I'm a founding board member of Richmond Rainbow Pride, the first LGBTQ advocacy organization in our city. And I wanna share how I've been running for city council. For months now, I've personally visited over three, thirty-five hundred households. From those countless hours spent speaking with our community, I feel clear I am best, I will be the best advocate for the needs of my district and the city of Richmond both. I know how to work with all kinds of people to get things done. Together, we can push for the things our community needs, such as crime and wildfire prevention, affordable housing in our city center, and programs to address homelessness. And I'm the only corporate free candidate running in this district. And that allows me to serve you, the residents of Richmond, versus big corporate interests. This is particularly important to establish as a value in our area, which is getting representation in Richmond for the first time in almost thirty years. That's why I'm endorsed by the Democratic Party, the Sierra Club, the two unions that represent our city staff, Local ten twenty-one and Local twenty-one, and such elected officials as County Supervisor John Joya, El Cerrito Mayor Gabriel Quinto, and former Richmond Mayor and current city council member Gail McLaughlin. I would appre- I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all this evening and to share more about my commitment to the city of Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Purcell. Well, each of you will have the opportunity to reinforce your opening statement by virtue of this question. And I'll start with you, Ms. Bana. What experience qualifies you to serve as a member of the Richmond City Council? And what differentiates you from the other candidates?
Thank you. So, uh, my opponent, uh, claims he's corporate free. I have not received any corporate donation. Uh, just to clarify that for the record. I, as an experience, I have thirty years of experience in problem solving. I'm pragmatic. First, I do my research to define the problem. You know, defining the problem is half the solution. To find, um, all the constraints, all the stakeholders, all the options, and then uh, try to take the right approach. In addition to being an engineer, with having worked on many projects successfully, I'm also an advocate. My opponent has a degree in human rights. I've been the international coordinator of an international campaign to save people's lives from stoning in Iran. I was successful in saving lives of nine women. I saved lives of two youth from death penalty. So I have been a very successful human rights advocate in my own community. I have delivered for this community. I have a mailing list. I'm in contact with hundreds of community members on a daily basis. I receive calls, emails about their issues. I try to address them directly. I'm working on their issues. And I've been bringing this community together to find a voice and work with different agencies inside the city, county and outside.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your response.
Of course.
Same question for you, Mr. Purcell. What experience qualifies you to serve on the Richmond City Council? And what differentiates you from the other candidates?
Well, my background and my education, uh, for my political science degree and my degree in philosophy, um, is part of that. I would say my master's in law where I was working at the state capitol. Um, we had to, I was working with an advocacy group, um, called Equality California, where we were advocating for, uh, various different, uh, bills regarding human rights. So we had a number of days where we had to go and meet with representatives and be able to try and convince them whether, uh, of the validity of expansion of human rights. So I feel like that has, uh, led to my ability to be able to speak to people across the aisle and to be able to, uh, advocate for a position that I is trying to be helpful to a larger group of people, even if it doesn't necessarily personally benefit me. Um, as well, having been active within the politics of Richmond for eight years, um, I have a great sense of the way that the city functions, whether it's, uh, because of my being May Valley or whether it's been in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you for your response. So here is a district-specific question coming for the two of you. And I'll start with you, Mr. Purcell, on this one. In two thousand twenty-one, Prologis purchased the Hilltop Mall site. What do you think should be developed there and why?
Well, I'm glad you asked, cuz I have been attending all of those Prologis meetings. And, um, not only have they been, uh, giving what they want from, uh, the development, but they've also been really good about listening to what the community is asking for. So what I would like to see is what the community has been asking for, which is something that is going to be a mix of small businesses, restaurants, an open area. They've made the comparison to, um, what's it called? Emeryville. Uh, and I think that that would be a beautiful, uh, bring beautiful life to the area where we have been having a void of where we could go shopping, where somebody can go to be able to spend some time sipping coffee or whatever. But as well, they've also been very open to the idea of having mixed use and affordable housing as part of that. Um, I'm not sure how they're gonna accomplish it, but I do know that they are actively listening. And I know that if we have the community's voice at the table, it's gonna be something that the city of Richmond will be very proud of.
Thank you for your response. Ms. Bana, same question for you. Two thousand twenty-one, Prologis purchased the Hilltop Mall. What do you think should be developed there and why?
Thank you. So, um, it's great that the city's trying to find out what people want and hopefully reconcile it with what Prologis wants. Prologis has its own specific goal. It needs to make money out of the project and we hope they do. And people want, you know, housing, retail, a nice rooftop for concerts, community building and everything. And we hope it all can come together. We don't want Prologis to put it for sale and leave and not come into an agreement with the city. We want a win-win-win situation for the city, residents and Prologis. In addition, as the Director of Citizens for Greener Communities, along with the President of the organization, we invited Prologis representative to take a look at the community and explore a possible green, um, trail between, um, Hilltop area where Prologis property is and this part of District Four. So we can connect the communities together and long-term, we can connect them through a green trail to Bay Trail. So it's very important, community building within Hilltop and also connecting communities. So from other areas, neighbors can go to Hilltop for shopping, entertainment and other things.
Thank you. And since you're on the floor, Ms. Bana, I'm gonna follow up the next question with you. How do you plan on improving the image of the city of Richmond?
One of the first things I would like to do, uh, is bring in, uh, somebody, you know, when somebody buys, um, shopping center or mall or something, they hire someone to bring businesses in or retailers in. That's what the city needs to do. We need to do it twofolds. One, attracting and inviting businesses to the city. We do need more businesses to generate more revenue. And the second thing is, uh, with all the, uh, three hundred seventy billion dollar that Biden's administration is giving the public for the next ten years on clean energy, pollution reduction, congestion reduction and everything, we can bring a part of that to Richmond. We need to collaborate with, uh, other local governments, with county, with the state, and reach out to our congressional representatives and make sure Richmond gets its own share of the big pie.
Thank you. Same question for you, Mr. Purcell. How do you plan on improving the image of the city of Richmond?
Well, I think there's many ways to do that. One would be actually through increasing city staff so we can address a number of the issues that we have around our city that have not been addressed. Things like, uh, illegal dumping, overgrowth abatement, um, improving our response times on things to be able to make sure that we're actually addressing the issues that citizens care about. People talk and it, it carries. That said, I think that as well, we need to be building a, a shit, we need to be building a greater shared image of the culture of Richmond. When I first moved here, I remember it, uh, there was a billboard that said, "The most rosy derivative museums in the world." That sort of promotion was about a little bit of light humor, but it was also about making you proud of the place where you grew, where you were and the place where you could go and visit. And it made it more inviting because it was trying to tell people that we are a place to visit and we have something to give. And I think that we need to do that in a new way with, uh, by looking at either Point Malati when that is developed or perhaps the mall when that is, uh, developed.
Thank you for your response. And I'm gonna start this next question with you. This will be the last question as part of the program. How will you rally the different groups in the community to get beyond the division of politics after the election is over? So we can be unified in moving, uh, the city forward for the benefit of all of residents of Richmond?
Well, uh, I think it's probably been said many times already this evening, but you know, uh, one of the things is that I really do try to hear people out. And I understand as well that we don't necessarily have to agree on all things. But what we do, uh, have is the ability to find shared values. Shared values are the ability for us to be able to mobilize around individual issues that we care about, to be able to give it more energy. And I feel like that is a way to be able to, uh, to be able to direct us, um, towards a more positive outcome because we are able to find something that we all agree on and we are able to move, uh, and build those shared experiences. But I think as well, like I, I wanna speak to the point that I, I really have been trying to, as I've been knocking on all these doors, knock on every single door. I didn't just knock on the, on the people who were supposedly able, going to vote for me. I voted, I knocked on the doors of every single person because I wanted to hear what every person's perspective of my district was. And I feel like that's really important is that sometimes you just have to hear people out and you just have to let them be heard.
Thank you. Same question for you, Ms. Bana. How will you rally the different groups in the community to get beyond the divisions of politics after the election is over? So we can be united in moving the city forward for the benefit of everyone in Richmond?
I'm glad you're asking. As a resident, I have worked with Supervisor Joya, uh, Tom Butt, Gail McLaughlin, Douglas Johnson, our fire department, crime prevention department, our public works, penal city manager, um, penal fire department, Confire, East Bay Regional Parks, East Bay Mud, Calfire. I even reached out to Congressman John Gorman and invited him to hear our community. I'm in close contact with our residents, uh, all the neighborhood council presidents, residents of both, um, Richmond District Four, outside District Four, El Sobrante, even Penal and Hercules by committee group is expanding. So you can imagine that as a city council member, I definitely will work with more people and I have delivered so far and I will continue to deliver even more for the community.
Thank you. I want to commend both of you for participating this part of the program and being concise with your responses. At this time, I'm going to ask that all of our candidates be put on the screen and we're gonna go into a really quick, a roundtable session. And I'm gonna start off with a, what I consider to be somewhat of a hot question. So what I'm going to do is I'm gonna put the question out there. Uh, the first person who latches on to the question, I'll give them the opportunity to have the floor. If others wanna chime in on it, put your hand up and I'll bring you into the conversation and the dialogue. It's been brought up a few times tonight, but it's not been expounded upon. So now is the opportunity to quickly weigh in on it. And it has to do with Point Malati. It's been a source of controversy for decades. So my question to you is, what do you think the resolution is for Point Malati? What should happen there and how can we actually bring something to fruition that is consistent with what the federal government required when they deeded that property to the city of Richmond? Who wants to jump on? Ah, we got Andrew Butt on that. Mr. Butt?
Thank you, sir. I'd be happy to answer that. I thought a lot about that, obviously. Um, I, I, Point Malati is, is a real passion for me. I go out there a lot, a lot. I take my kids out there. I take my dogs out there. Um, as a planning commissioner, I, I voted to approve the project out there. Um, but, but I, you know, we, we, we made sure that it was a good project and I, I think it was and is. I think, um, you know, i- is may, many of you may well know or may not know that, that land was given by the federal government, by Ron Dellum specifically, to be a revenue generating project for the city of Richmond. So it, it, it was a gift with, with this caveat that it was gonna be, you know, this, this ongoing revenue generator for the city. And I think it should be, I think it could be. I think, um, if we can get that back on track and you know, ma- ma- maybe people need to come back to the table and maybe, maybe there are elements that can be reconsidered. Like, you know, could, could, could it be done in a way that you could have, you know, a mix of housing for, for middle and low income? Um, could it be done in a way where, where the parks are better designed or better allocated? I think that may be possible. But I think in the end, um, it, it can and should be a revenue generator for the city. We can have a park. We can have, uh, a, a restored historic village. We can have a, a revenue-producing project there, whether it's housing or whether it's, you know, some other element. Um, that, that can really be a win-win for everybody. And I think, um, it's unfortunate that, that there has been an effort um, successful so far to basically halt that project, to look at something very different, which is a park, um, that would, that would not be revenue generating at all. It would, it might be a nice park, but, but taxpayers pay to upkeep parks. And I think we could have the park and we could have, we can basically have our cake and eat it too. And I think we should be able to do that. And I would certainly support moving that forward, as I did as a planning commissioner.
Okay. Uh, I, would you hand up, I, okay, Mr. Purcell and Mr. Bouzay, cuz I think Mr. Purcell's.
Oh, actually, Mr. Bouzay was first and I wanna.
Mr. Bouzay, you go.
Sorry.
In, in, in fairness, I'll.
In fairness, I'll give it to Mr. Purcell and come behind him.
Okay. All right. Well, what we should be turning Point Malati into is a gemstone park. We already have money that has been given by Gavin Newsom through Nancy Skinner's office to be able to help turn that into a gemstone park, just like Tilden Park, just like some of the other great parks that we have here in California. There are very few pieces of the coastline that, that have not been rela- have been turned into housing or, or, or boardwalks or something like that. And we need to be returning it to nature. Not only because, for the health of our marina and for the health of the but also to make sure that we have a place where people are able to learn about the history of California, the history of the Alone people who are here before all of us. And I really do think that it will be a revenue generator. Every dollar that is spent on a park gives $4 back to the community, whether that be through increase of housing prices, whether that brings it through the attraction that the house, that the park itself brings. And then as well be through the businesses that support around it. So I really do think it is worthwhile as a park.
Okay, we're going to go with Mr. Bouzay, then we're going to go with Mr. Garcia and then Mr. Zapata. And let's be concise because the clock is winding down. Mr. Bouzay.
Thank you, sir. Let me tell you about Point Malati. That is a win-win-win situation. You can have the beach, you can have the open space. We definitely need to redo Line Haven building. We definitely have to do the building. The building will speak to our general fund because our general fund and the unpaid annuities has really suffered because there's no money coming in. When you do million dollar homes there, we will generate a lot of funds for our general fund for the city of Richmond. I also believe, I disagree with Oscar about the hiking. There is hiking trails up there. Not as long, but there are hiking trail. We can do basically the same thing Alameda Beach is doing right now. Because Alameda Beach has basically the same weight, except for it's lower on the ground. I would love to take those old houses out there and rehab those and do them as bed and breakfasts where the city could generate funds. And then most of all, with the development, we get the infrastructure. We get the sewer, we get the water, we get the police and we get the fire. And I'll back off for somebody else.
Thank you, Mr. Bouzay. So I'm going to go with Mr. Garcia, Mrs. Zapata, and then we're going to close out with Ms. Robinson. I've got eight thirteen right now. So if I can rack this up in the next three, four minutes, that would be helpful because we're going to have to wind down your closing statements. So Mr. Garcia, you go, followed by Mrs. Zapata and closed out with Ms. Robinson.
Yes. So I want to advocate for District Three as part of this conversation related to Point Malati. Not sure if folks were, are aware, but these tens of millions of dollars that are being used to save or buy the park were actually taken from funds that the city was hoping to use in areas such as District Three that are in existing need and have a lot of programs that are currently not funded. And that to me i- is an unequitable way of making decisions here in the city of Richmond. Do, do, does protecting Point Malati as a park matter more than protecting and giving services to the residents of District Three? I, I don't think so. I think that there needs to be conversations that look at and protect all residents of Richmond, especially those in District Three, especially in the South Side, where these monies were taken from.
Thank you. Mrs. Zapata.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Wright, you said it best. This has been going on for centuries. For many, many years, let's stop it. It's already done. It's a done deal. I don't know why we're continuing talking about it. Once the governor came in and gave us all that money, this project is done. Let it, let the city of Richmond focus on the next big project that's going to be able to bring the economic development that we need today. Point Malati is a dream in the clouds. That may never happen. It could be another century of battles of lawsuits of the city of Richmond fighting. We have to stop that. Let's focus our energy and our money and our time to Hilltop. That's where the money is going to come in from. That's a development. Those are the jobs. Those are the jobs tomorrow. Those are the development today. That's the funds that we need. We need to be able to prioritize and build where we can, where the battle to do it is going to be less hard, less difficult than fighting this uphill battle with Point Malati that's been going on forever. So, thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
Yeah. So I, I agree with Caesar. It's time to move on. I feel like we need to leave the shoreline to, to what it is. But I think when I'm listening to everybody, I feel like we're missing a really key point. And that is for too many years, the city of Richmond, especially our business development, has really missed the point and missed the moment and missed the opportunity to think about the assets that we have in Richmond and actually target city support for development around those assets. So that as people come into our city to ride their bikes over the Richmond, over the Richmond Bridge, to go to Point Malati, to go to Point Pinole, to go to the Rosie River Museum, we haven't targeted development so we can capture their dollars while they're here. We haven't targeted development to support the local entrepreneurs and businesses who could actually create institutions around that, what people would come to our city and leave their cash. We haven't targeted development to create that nighttime activity that so many residents have talked to me about as I'm knocking on doors that they crave and that they go to Berkeley and Oakland and San Francisco to get. I feel like that's where we need to be focusing our attention on these opportunities and the assets that we have. And we need to be targeting development around those opportunities that we can bring in and capture dollars. I feel like that is a huge missing opportunity and we should be focusing there.
Thank you all for your input during this part of our program this evening. Going to now move to the one minute closing statements, one minute closing statements. And for simplicity and order in my own mind, I'm just going to go in alphabetical order. So we're going to start with you, Ms. Bana, your one minute closing statement.
As a community advocate, I have, I have proven that I work for you at District Four and gained results. To elect your city council member, please consider experience, proven record of leadership, teamwork, public service and accessibility. And above all, who will be your voice? Supervisor Joya recently said, "I've been pushing him for establishing a creekside community park." And I told him, "This was my job to push him. I am proud of urging authorities to work for my community." "I mobilized the community to prevent cuts to the fire department and was successful. That is why firefighters are endorsing me." "Public safety is important to us. It is important to residents and to businesses. We need to bring in more businesses to generate more revenue and avoid bankruptcy. I would never undermine emergency responders. Vote for me. I have been working hard for your public safety. Thank you."
Thank you. Mr. Bouzay?
Thank you very much. Let me start this off with District Lee, District Three Lives Matter. They have never had the opportunity to have a council person that could deal directly with that district. I have a known history of fighting for my people. I stand up for them. And I think the black and brown community is being underserved in District Three. And so I'm asking you to please vote for me, put me back on the council. First of all, go back and look at what I did on the council. Maybe there was a little controversy, but guess what? We got things done. The hacienda, you know, a bunch of streets being repaired. I did not let them put us in second place. We'll never be in second place. Let me say it again. District Three Lives Matter. And we are going to make sure that it does. Whether I'm on the council or off the council, I'm going to continue doing what I've done for the last thirty seven years. And that's represent all the people on the South Side. And now that I'll be their council person, I will continue to do that. Vote for Corky Bouzay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Butt?
Thank you. So I think Richmond has a ton of potential. That's really why I'm in this race. That's, that's why I'm running for council. I think we need, we need to unlock that potential. You know, we need to focus on the great things that we know we have and we need to stop taking the city in a really backwards direction and running off business, worsening the homelessness problem. Just make, making it an unattractive area that, that people, you know, don't feel comfortable being and living and working in. I think we, we need to focus on, on the fundamentals here. We need, we need to make sure that it feels safe, that it looks clean. And from there, I think we can bring in businesses, we can bring in revenue, we can bring in development. We can, and I mean good development that follows the general plan. And we can, we can bring in investment. And from there, we can create the city that we all know we need and, and want. And that's, that's a city that provides recreation, that provides environmental cleanliness, that provides health, wellness and a positive atmosphere for everyone. Please vote for me for District Two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butt. Mr. Garcia?
Sorry. Hi, good evening. Thank you, everyone, for joining tonight. I'm the candidate who has been active and monitoring and reaching out to all voters here in the district to understand what the issues are. My campaign is truly grassroots. I've been door knocking. I've knocked at over 1,200 doors already here in the district. And I've heard you loud and clear that public safety and keeping our streets clean is a top priority for you. I'm directly connected to many of you. And I have the endorsement of community leaders like the 23rd Street Merchants Association, neighborhood council leaders such as Linda Whitmore. And I also count on regional support such as the mayors of El Cerrito, San Pablo and of course Richmond. And I'm the leader that will bring change that we desperately need here in Richmond.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Purcell?
All right. I'm looking for the timer. Oh. From speaking with many people during canvassing in the years that I have dedicated to this community, I know that the values of Richmond residents align with my own. That's why I'm a corporate free candidate. My campaign is funded by our community and that's who I will answer to. When Richmond residents retire, they should be able to enjoy the community they have invested in for so long. Young families should feel that our city is safe and affordable. And when our most vulnerable neighbors fall on hard times, we want a city government that helps them get back on their feet. I've been involved in the community for a number of years and know how to navigate Richmond City Hall. That means educational opportunities, career opportunities and housing opportunities. That means more green spaces so our residents can enjoy clean, healthy places to build memories with their friends and families. That's why regional leaders, the Democratic Party and the Sierra Club have endorsed my candidacy for District Four City Council. I would appreciate your vote on November eighth. Thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
Unmute myself there. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and providing all of the candidates an opportunity to share our vision and policy positions. Richmond is a city of working families. For 20 years, my work has been centered around serving families and empowering youth. I am proud of our city, even with all of its challenges. I am proud to live and fight for the District Three residents. I'm passionate about making Richmond a place where children and families can safely walk the school, parks, where residents have a chance to work at well-paying and satisfying jobs and where everyone has shelter, health, so, social services to support, to get the support they need to thrive and support their families. I have the discipline, experience and patience and compassion to work with people to collaboratively, collaboratively find real solutions to complex problems. That is why I'm endorsed by our city workers by Richmond Firefighters Local 180 and SCIU and Supervisor John Joya. I would be honored to earn your vote and work together to nurture this vision for Richmond.
Thank you. Mr. Zapata?
All right. I am the candidate who will help uplift all of Richmond, six districts, one Richmond, working with all to bring them to the table to find solutions. Those who know me know that I am persistent and I will not give up. I have worked in every community of Richmond. I have empathy. I'm pragmatic and I think outside the box. And most importantly, I do not have conflicts of interest. I've been endorsed by our State Controller Betty Yee, State Treasurer Fiona Ma, every mayor of our surrounding cities, including El Cerrito, Pinole and San Pablo, as well as Richmond residents all over Richmond and former elected officials to Richmond City Councils, Maria Maramontes, John Marcus, Jael Marick, among others. Let's restart our economic development engine. Remember, six districts, one Richmond. I hope to be able to earn your vote this November. Thank you for the League of Women Voters for doing this event. And thank you, Mr. Wright, for hosting.
I want to thank all of our candidates for participating in the forum tonight, for being concise and adhering to the rules of engagement. It's been a very informative and pleasant experience. So once again, I thank you for granting me the opportunity to be the moderator tonight. At this time, I would like to introduce the President of the West Contra Costa County League of Women Voters, Cheryl Collier for closing remarks. And before we do that, let's give a virtual hand clap to our, our candidates for participating tonight. Good on you. And now you're in the hands of the President, Ms. Cheryl Collier.
Good evening and thank you for coming. I thought that tonight's forum showed a great insight into the ideas and knowledge of each of the candidates. I want to take this time myself to thank Jeff Wright for the fabulous job he did as a moderator. I'd like to take, thank KCRT, Richard Lee and Brandon Blair, who were the Weber, webinar operators, excuse me, the NAACP and Zeta Phi Beta Sorority for joining the League of Women Voters as sponsors. A special thanks for Linda Whitmore and Madeline Craig Berger. I, I'm sorry. I just chopped her name up. I'm sorry. League of Women Voters members, who were the coordinators tonight. So the Voter Edge is a fantastic program that was created by the League of Women Voters of California. And it provides an opportunity for candidates to provide information by giving the edge, the information, and therefore voters then can use as simple as their zip code and plug in and, and get information on who they're going to vote for up and down the ballot. So it's valuable on both ends for the candidate and also for the voters. So please take a moment to go to votersedge.org and look at it and, and you'll get some valuable information. I'd like to say thank you again for attending this forum, for the the attendees and what have you. I appreciate all of you for coming out. Special thanks for the candidates who offered their service, their ideas and their commitments. And again, I want to thank the audience for attending. You can revisit tonight's forum on KCRT, Channel 28, and the League of Women Voters website and on Facebook. I'd like to say good night and cast your vote on November eighth. Thank you again.